Let me call to order the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting. By the way, Jessica, you ready?
No.
Okay, all right. Let me call to order the Special Board Meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency for today, January 23rd. Let me do a roll call, please.
Chairman Mulholland.
Here.
Director Craven.
Here.
Director Zaragoza.
Here.
Director Kelly.
Here.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to closed session at 12:00 and then- All right, well, shoot, there we go. Let me call to order the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting. We're going to begin at Item D following closed session, and that's the Pleasure Leagues. If you'll rise, please.
Please follow me. Pleasure Leagues, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with its majesty.
All right, Item Number E, Agenda Review.
We have one change to recommend, Chairman Mulholland.
Okay.
That Item Number Six be pulled and that it be sent to the Executive Committee for review.
Okay. Do here any objection? All right, a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing on. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Public comments, opportunity for the public to address GMA matters not on the agenda. Susan.
Susan Mulligan, Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. Very briefly, I just want to clear up any- some misrepresentations that may have occurred in private meetings this last month with respect to Cuyahoga's perspective on the North Pleasant Valley desalter. Just want to clarify that Cuyahoga supports City of Camarillo control of a desalter in their service area and supports Camarillo's, although it's interesting to think about, a public-private partnership for production of credits or production of water for Camarillo's service area. That desalter should be built through a proper public process, which involves requirements of the Public Contract Code, and I just want to go on record that we are in support of Camarillo, and for Camarillo, if they want to contract out construction of that desalter, that they go through a proper public process for that, rather than sort of what's been proposed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Dale Zarowski with the Farm Bureau and our Irrigated Lands Group. We call V-COG. I just wanted to announce that as part of the educational classes we have in 2013, that we've been going to work cooperatively with the GMA to have online video training sessions for the new irrigation allowance index that's coming online, and V-COG members will be able to go online, see the videos that the GMA worked with Stuart Stiles to develop, then take a short quiz, 10 questions at the end of it to make sure they got the information out of it, and if they pass the quiz, they get two hours of educational credit. So hopefully, a good way, we'll be spreading the news to our 1,400 V-COG members in a mailing, and hopefully, we'll get lots of response on the training sessions.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, Board Member comments, anybody? Board Member comments? I got a couple of comments. Because we went into closed session, we didn't do the roll call, but Jessica, show that Sam is here, Dave Schwa-Bahr and Dan Naumann, the three alternates are here, okay? And finally, just as FYI, in case anybody's wondering, about four hours ago, Jeff called me from the county, and he sounded so sick, I actually put the phone out here so the bugs wouldn't come into my ear, but that's why he's not here today, so Gerhart is in his place, but rather than coming here and infecting all of us, you could tell it in his voice, you said you're getting over it, and it has been going around, so, okay? Those are the items. Let's go ahead and deal with the consent agenda. A motion, please.
No approval.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? A roll call, please.
Chairman Mulholland.
Yes.
Director Craven.
Yes.
Director Zaragoza.
Yes.
Director Kelly.
Yes.
Director Borchardt.
Yes.
Okay, we have some informational items, Number Three, Los Postes Basin Update, and Robert, you're going to do that, or Brian is going to do that? Okay.
Sorry about that, Chair, got caught multitasking.
Apparently, new day and age.
Good afternoon, Robert Aronio, Creston Mutual Water Company, also here on behalf of the Los Postes Basin Users Group. I'm just going to be doing a short update as to whereabouts we were today, and then I'm going to be turning over the presentation to the actual architect who's been designing this plan and been taking all the comments and doing the hard work of this, Brian Bondi, to step you through our presentation about the Los Postes Basin Plan and what's coming up.
Okay.
This after- this morning, we met again, as we've been holding on to our regular, every-two-week rotation. We did have discussions today about basin management objectives and aired out the concerns that GMA staff did, and also provide direction to Brian on how to take what we believe is existing language already within the plan and tie that to those BMOs in order to make it more clear as to what we're to do and what the options are available to us should we happen to reach a BMO or start getting close to one of those levels. We've completed with comments from everyone, and we're going to actually skip the next meeting in order to give Brian time in order to start drafting Red Line Version Number Two that we hope to be able to have out somewhere at the end of March and be able to proceed along with that.
Okay.
But he needs some time now in order to, so to speak, get locked in the basement and duct taped down there so he can focus on all the multitude of comments and feedback that he's received and let they all permeate and come out with all kinds of new language.
That's actually a better description. I think years ago, we talked about sending him to the top of the mountain to hum, so maybe going to the basement with duct tape is actually a better solution.
Yeah.
Actually, you promised me an RV.
Yeah, we promised him an RV that we'd park in your backyard until it's done, so the basement, actually, I like the basement.
Basement's much more appropriate.
Yes, absolutely, and the duct tape. It's a con- it's a-
So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over at this point, let Brian talk to you about the PowerPoint presentation that we've submitted. Thank you.
It's basement, duct tape, and no Internet access. I mean, it's painful.
For those of you that know Robert, the concept of duct tape in a basement is actually pretty frightening.
Well, when he said he was multitasking, I'm thinking throttle, clutch, how more-
Yeah.
How more difficult can it be?
Well, thank you to staff and the board for the opportunity to give you an update on the Los Postes Basin Plan. I understand from talking with the chairman that we're a bit short on time.
Yeah, if- so I can clarify. John has to leave at 3:15. Charlotte has also because of the city and obligations, so what my plan, as I said to staff, is to try to get through these items quickly as you can so we can cover. I'd like for the action items, that we have a full board here to deal with those items, so that's what I had told Brian.
Okay, well, guide me on the time, and we have some important points at the end, so if you find in the middle that we need to move it along, let me know earlier rather than later, because I'd like to get to the points at the end.
Okay.
If you will. Real quick, goals for this presentation today. We'd like to describe the basin plan with an emphasis on the key groundwater management issues and possible solutions. We'd like to describe how L-PUG intends to move the process forward. We'd like to identify some key policy issues for the GMA to be thinking about, and lastly, time permitting, we would like to receive any board feedback that you see as appropriate at this time. Just real quick, going back through the history, actually, this graphic, I don't know if it's the chairman or Jeff that frequently refers to L-PUG as the brain chus, but this seemed appropriate. Wanting to talk a little bit about what we've been doing, so L-PUG's been meeting for several years, we're working on this plan, sometimes we hear, what's taking so long? What are you guys really doing? It's more than just the plan. We've spent quite a bit of time helping the pumpers in the basin understand the fundamentals. How does the basin work? What is the groundwater hydrology? Where does water come from? Where does it go? How does it get to your wells? And what are the issues? What are the key basin management issues that we need to be looking at addressing over time? The group spent a fair amount of time developing goals. Your board actually heard those goals sometime in 2011, so I'm not going to go back through those. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about what potential solutions might be for the different issues. We've identified a preferred solution, at least for our salt or salinity issues in the basin. We've identified a number of unresolved issues. Part of that process has been working with GMA staff. And lastly, we've included an implementation plan for how we move our process forward. So those are the sort of seven key things we've been working on over the last few years. In terms of the basin-specific plan itself, I'm not going to go through the details of what's in the plan, but suffice it to say, there's several key components of the plan. Obviously, we have a stated purpose and we have goals. Again, you've seen those in the past. We talk a bit about the institutional setting, so the GMA is a big part of the institutional setting, as is the Regional Board, related to issues of salinity and salt management, as well are the individual entities in the basin, the different water companies and purveyors. We have a great deal of discussion in a high level of detail about the conditions in the basin. Again, the hydrogeology, what are the aquifers? What are the water levels? What is the water quality? That's where we spent quite a bit of time, wanting to get the foundation of the technical understanding nailed down so that when we start talking about solutions, we're all in agreement on what the facts are. And of course, we have the basin management discussion and the implementation plan that I mentioned earlier. So this map is showing the Los Postes Valley. There's a lot going on in this map. I want to point you out to a few key things that you need to know. The basin is divided into two areas that we're looking at managing, the Western Management Area, that's the WMSA that you see in yellow, and the Eastern Management Subarea. In each of these areas, there's multiple groundwater aquifers from which groundwater's pumped, but what's important to realize is that over 80% of the water pumped in the basin is from one aquifer, it's the Fox Canyon Aquifer. And the Fox Canyon Aquifer does crop out at the edges of the basin, that's where you see sort of the yellow shaded areas. This is where water can directly infiltrate into the aquifer and recharge it. The two management areas were defined by the groundwater barrier that is right here in the middle of the basin, so this feature. Basically, that has the effect of dividing the Fox Canyon Aquifer into the West and East Areas. There's not really much, if any, hydraulic communication in the Fox Canyon Aquifer across that boundary. That's why we have the two areas. What makes managing those areas challenging, but also creates opportunities, is the fact that we have two major water systems that lie across that boundary in the Zone Mutual Water Company and Water Works District 19. Within the two areas, the issues and management approaches are different. In the Western Management Area, generally, we have good water quality, and for the most part of the basin, water levels have been stable historically. We do have one exception to that area, it's an area we refer to as a pumping depression, which is located in this general area, and I'll talk more about that as we go. In the Eastern Area, again, that area has experienced stable water levels with some exceptions, which I'll talk about, but the main driver, at least currently today for the pumpers, is we have a plume of brackish water that has entered the basin from percolate- percolation along the Arroyo, and that's the primary issue that folks are really concerned about today, managing the salts for their crops. Now, that's not to say that the idea that these basins could go into overdraft isn't a concern, it is, but salinity management is the priority for most of the folks in the basin today. In fact, that's an important consideration that's driven how the basin plan has been developed, and it's driven the prioritization of the issues for the group, and this is one area where I think staff, in working with L-PUG, we've seen sort of the largest difference of opinions. In general, our basin plan says something along the lines of that salts are the immediate issue because we're not in overdraft today in the basin, so the plan is focused on managing salts with desalters, which could also potentially increase the yield of the basin, we'll explain what that means a little bit later, but the group recognizes that basins could easily go into overdraft, and they're looking at tracking that issue carefully and looking at other options after the desalters to address overdraft if it should come to be an issue. It's a living document, and it's an evolving process, so the group never set out to write an all-encompassing plan that would deal with every possible issue that we might face over the next, whatever planning horizon you're talking about, 10 years, 20 years, and so on and so forth. We think that perspective has been made very clear in the document and in our conversations with staff, but again, I think it's still a point of diverging philosophy or perspective in as we move forward. In some of the comments we've received, there's been a theme of wanting to see contingency plans for dealing with overdraft and looking at other things, some including things that are way, way out on the horizon, including climate change, which, if I understand, you know, the effects of that are later this century. So it's kind of a challenge for folks who are dealing with salinity management problems today with their crops to be looking at dealing with problems that could be happening in the future that aren't happening now. Not to say that those aren't real problems and can't happen, but it's about prioritization of what the group can spend its limited amount of time dealing with, and that's how it's driven and structured the process and how we've gotten to where we are today. So it may be helpful to hear from, or would be helpful to hear from the board on how you view the priorities for the basin to help us continue to drive this process forward. Let's talk about the Western Management Subarea in a little more detail, and this is the part where we can save some time if we need to. Some of this will be review. Basically, this circle area, this bullseye, is where the pumping depression is. Water moves into the basin from recharge areas and is flowing towards the pumping depression. We have this depression for two reasons. We have concentrated pumping from two large water systems in that area, and we're also backed up against that groundwater barrier, so there's no contribution of groundwater from the east to fill in that area. Those two things combined to give you this pervasive area of low water levels and an area that's at risk for, frankly, at risk for going into overdraft in the future. We've been seeing rising water levels recently, but this is a problem area that we should be watching closely. In the western part of the basin, when you look at the water level trends over time, you see that they're stable over climatic cycles, that's what this up-and-down trend is, wet period, dry period, wet period, dry period. That's what we want to see continue in the basin, that's our goal for the basin in that area, is to continue to see this pattern. That means you're in balance, things are stable, and that's what we'd like to see. It's in the pumping depression where we have the concerns. Here's where we've had the long history of declining water levels. We've seen water levels rise when we've taken some pumping out, we've seen them go back down when pumping comes back on, and back up again. Currently, we're in the period here where we're seeing rising water levels, and the reason for that is District 19 has moved about 1,000 acre-feet of their pumping from this area over into the other basin. So we're able to understand how this works at a fairly high level of detail, and under current pumping management practices, again, that's a voluntary shift in pumping that District 19 did, but as long as that lasts, things will be looking good. That's not to say this is permanent, but something we should look at and keep track In terms of the western area yield for the whole part of the west Los Postes Basin, we determined that the yield of the basin is about 11,000 acre-feet per year. I won't go into the details of how we did it, but it has to do with looking at how stable those water levels were over time, over those cycles, and looking at how much pumping was going on during that period. So for all the aquifers, you're looking at a bar chart of pumping here per year. The yellow is the Fox Canyon, the other colors are the other aquifers where we have minor- lesser amounts of pumping. The yield here's been added up for all the aquifers, and you can see that over time, pumping averages above and below that, and more recent, we've been basically a little bit above, a little bit below, depending on the year. So this comports with the history of the water levels where we're seeing things stable over cycles, and this is what we'd like to see continue in the basin. In terms of water quality, water quality in the western Los Postes is good, I'll save time and not talk about that in any more detail. Eastern Management Area, again, that's the area east of the groundwater barrier, so incorporating the portion of the Los Postes Valley all the way out to Moore Park and the Highway 23 area. Again, the big story there is the poor quality water that most of you have heard about, that's this red area where we have chloride concentrations in excess of 100 milligrams per liter. That's sort of the rule of thumb that Dr. Faber has given us for chlorides, for agricultural purposes anyways. So that's the area that's affected, and really, what's happened here, and this may be review for some of you, maybe not for others, but the reason we have this really goes way back in history. Historically, this basin was clearly in overdraft, water levels had fallen quite a bit extensively, and so that opened up space in the aquifer, the aquifer's not full. Well, along came the cities of Moore Park and Simi Valley, people flushing their toilets, water's processed through the treatment plant and discharged to the Arroyo. That water has been filling the aquifer back up from those treatment plants since the 70s, or late 60s, early 70s. The base of the basin is filled back up, or at least this bottom part of the basin is filled back up with recycled water, and that's what people, that's what the basin has become dependent on. Pumping in this basin is supported by that water, if that water went away, there would be a problem. So the good news for folks is they have water, bad news is the water has brought the salts that are creating urgent issues for people to deal with today. In terms of how groundwater moves in the Eastern Management Area, these dots are representing pumping with the size of the dot proportional to the magnitude of the pumping, and what you can see, and then here's the barrier, so this is the Eastern Management Area, what you can see is pumping's concentrated in the middle of the basin, it just has to do with the distribution of the wells and the ranches and so on and so forth. And the effect that has is it causes there to be a trough of lower water levels in the middle of the basin. You can see the numbers get smaller in the middle, they're higher at the top where we have recharge, they're higher at the bottom where we have recharge from the Arroyo, okay? So this sets up the groundwater flow pattern, everything's moving towards the center of the basin, and that's what the arrows are indicating there. Historically, what we've seen is, here's the pattern I spoke about, the historical overdraft, the refilling of the basin based on the introduction of the water from the treatment plants, as well as a little bit of water from Simi Valley that they pump for de-watering is also part of that. In the middle part of the basin, we saw a slightly different response, water levels didn't rise, but they stabilized. Here's the stabilization that we'd like to continue to see in the basin. The caveat here is we did see water levels drop dramatically during the three years of ASR pumping, aquifer storage and recovery pumping by Cuyahoga. Since we've stopped pumping, we've seen water levels start to rise again, and we expect that they will level out at some new stable level, that'll probably be lower than the old stable level, albeit a stable level though again. And so what we're looking for is that stabilization, and once that occurs, we'd like to see that stabilization maintained moving forward, that's the goal for the basin. Further to the north and east, similar trends, water levels have dropped, reached a stabilization point, they dropped during the ASR pumping, and now we're seeing, well, these, we don't have more recent data, but starting to come up again. And again, we'd like to see them stabilize and then maintain that stabilization moving This graph is just showing what's happening in the actual ASR wellfield, and we see continued recovery of water levels since we finished the bulk of our pumping at the end of 2010. So this process will go on for some period of time and then probably reach a point where it levels off, and that's, again, what we're looking for as being our new target moving In terms of the yield for the eastern area, it's roughly 19,000 acre-feet per year. We don't have time to go into the details of how that was determined, but basically, it has to do with looking at the pumping during the period when water levels were stable. So water levels aren't changing, what's coming in is equal to what's going out, and when you have that condition in the basin, it's really easy to assess the yield, and that's what we have here. As much as half of this yield is from the water coming from Moore Park and Simi Valley and recharging, percolating along the creek, as much as half of it is native yield of water that's ultimately derived from rain, how it gets into the aquifer, there's different ways that happens, we won't go through that, but the key point is that as much as half of this water that the basin is dependent on is from those outside sources. An additional issue is that because the aquifers are full in that southern part of the area, right now, the basin can't accept rainwater runoff, storm water recharge. That water comes through the Arroyo, that shallow zone's already full, the storm flow takes a magic carpet ride out to Pleasant Valley, Camarillo area, so one thing we'd like to see, and part of what we're trying to do, is to create a little bit of space to start capturing storm water, puts more water in the basin, it's also better quality If we were to do that, I think the estimates we have now are that there's about 4,000 to 8,000 acre-feet of water that's leaving the basin as surface water flow continuous year-round to Camarillo. The first thing would happen would be is you would start to capture that, then you would have to pump enough above and beyond that to lower the water levels, and then you could start talking about getting storm water. So there's sort of a sequence of things that would need to happen. But that's, in a nutshell, that's the general idea of where L-PUG is trying to go, at least for the nearer term, you know, the next five to 10 years, is get that process moving forward where we can do that type of project, and we'll talk a little bit more about the water quality implications of that here. So the main groundwater management issue is just sort of in summary here, for the western area, it's the pumping depression, and for the meantime, if we keep pumping patterns the same, this issue is improving. Eastern Management Subarea, obviously, we have a very notable water quality management issue that we need to be working on. We also have a need to deal with the potential impacts of any future ASR operations and figure out how to integrate that into overall basin management. And in both areas, there is a need to be looking at measures to increase the operational yield to keep pace with groundwater demand. I don't think anybody in L-PUG denies the fact that the demand for groundwater has the potential to go up, so we do need to be looking at ways to increase the supply to deal with increased demand, so that's part of what we're trying to do. So I want to talk a little bit in more detail about our options for managing the brackish groundwater, because I think this is a point that maybe hasn't gotten out there as much yet. What I'd like to do is look at the eastern area in cross-section view from north to south, with the Arroyo being in this area, there's a shallow aquifer that in some places has connection to the Fox Canyon, not all, and above the Fox Canyon is generally low permeability sediments that not many wells are screened in. So what we see with the Arroyo there, and then on the north part of the basin, there is some contribution of recharge directly to the aquifer. This well is designed to represent that pumping trough in the middle of the basin, so pumping is generally focused in the center part of the section here. And what, with the current pumping patterns and the recharge patterns, what we see is that water's flowing from two areas where it's highest to the low- water's flowing from two areas where it's highest to the low part in the middle of the basin where pumping is drawing it down. So water's flowing from the Arroyo towards the middle of the basin, as well as from the north side of the basin towards pumping. But what you'll see here is that the water levels nearest the Arroyo, and these are Fox Canyon water levels that I'm showing, it's highest near the Arroyo. So even though this is the topographic low point of the basin, this is the hydraulic high point of the basin. Water is moving, more water's moving this way than is moving this way. That can be counterintuitive for some people, but that's an important thing to understand in terms of how the basin works. So we have some water flow from the north, and then we have the red water here showing the higher salinity moving through and downward into the Fox Canyon. Sometimes it may be moving through the San Pedro and then down into the Fox Canyon. But overall, what we've seen develop here in cross-section view is representation of the brackish water plume. So that's sort of representing what we see today, roughly speaking, in terms of cartoons. It's partway through the basin. It's not all the way to the center where most of the pumping is, but it's moving that Future plume movement, all things being equal, pumping patterns as they are today continuing into the future, that plume will move right towards the middle of the basin where the low point in the pressure of the aquifer is, and it pretty much will stop there. It's not going to turn around and flow up to areas of higher pressure. It'll basically end up getting pumped out by the wells in the middle of the basin. So that's what we're looking at happening over time. Now, it's taken 40 years, 30, 40 years to get to this point, so you can kind of just tell this is going to take some more time to move through. But I think what's important to understand in terms of processes going on outside of the GMA and L-PUG is there's a salts TMDL that's been adopted by the Regional Board that is the long-term solution for the salinity issue. So what the salts TMDL says is the dischargers are going to have to meet certain concentrations in surface water. That surface water percolates into the basin. So over the long term, the idea is that the recharge quality will improve, this will flush through over decades. So the question for the pumpers is what do we do in the meantime? How can we manage salts over the next set of decades, knowing that ultimately, we don't have a near-term solution for the salts coming in? So that's kind of where people are at. And that's really what's driving folks in terms of their business decisions, is how do we deal with, at least for the ag folks, how do we deal with these salts, knowing there's not an immediate solution? So L-PUG's talked about options for dealing with this issue. One option would be less pumping. The problem with less pumping is there's a couple of things. One, you pretty much have to eliminate most of the pumping in the basin, because what you'd need to do is get water levels, and it's subtle here, but you'd have to get water levels higher on the north side to hold the plume back or drive it back. You'd have to eliminate virtually all the pumping in the basin to do that. And that's problematic for obvious reasons, but you know, there are folks that are making use of this brackish water, and you tell them to stop pumping water they're putting to use, it's kind of a challenging concept for some folks. So we think there's other ways to deal with this issue of the plume moving. Another option would be to pump it out using a well, treat it. Presumably, that water could then be used elsewhere in the basin. A couple of issues with that, three main issues with that. One, you might have to pump enough in order to capture the plume, so much water that you might draw water levels down in the basin to unacceptable levels and cause other problems. Even if you're doing that effectively, you still have a group of pumpers back here in this area that aren't really receiving much benefit from that. They're still in the middle of the plume. So that's a consideration. And maybe probably the most important here is this is a huge expensive project, massive project. Similarly, you could turn it around and try and inject water to hold the plume back. Same sorts of issues. People back here will still have brackish water. You're basically just holding this at bay. You would have benefit in terms of higher water levels, but again, this is a very expensive project. I mean, we look at the seawater intrusion on the coast, we haven't even got to the point with that where we've really gotten to a serious plan about doing injection for that, and this is only brackish water. So the costs don't really justify, don't rise, or the issue doesn't rise to the level of the cost that we're looking at here, at least from our perspective. So we think we have a way that might work to manage the salts. It's sort of a combination of some different things. What we'd like to try and do is pump from the shallow zones near the Arroyo, desalt that water, and set up a distribution system where we can give it to people who have effective wells so they can blend their salts down. And so we're able to manage the water quality through that means, but the added benefit of doing this, and if you do it carefully and in a managed fashion, you should be able to create that storage space I was talking about when I first started talking, such that we could start capturing some additional water from what's leaving the basin now, plus storm water. So this solution has water quality benefit and potentially water quantity benefit. And so this is the road that folks are really trying to head down. Let's get caught up on my notes here. But you know, identifying this as the preferred solution, this is where folks would like to head, doesn't mean it's set in stone. These are business people, they run ranches and so on and so forth. They're going to need to compare the cost of doing something like this with other options. Another option might be simply status quo. Folks are putting the water to use now. Folks can continue to find a way to put the water to use. Folks may want to change crops. They may want to look at blending with imported waters. So there's a whole host of other things that individuals at the ranch level or business level can make decisions to do. But this is the path that we're investigating. And right now, we're doing a study of the infrastructure of the major water systems in the basin to figure out how the routing of the water might work. That'll tell us, get us closer to the real cost of what a project like that would work, and then people can start making decisions about whether or not that's where they want to head. That's kind of where we're at in the grand scheme of things.
Brian, how much more, as I'm watching the clock here, as I indicated...
I'm at the key slides now. Yeah, so, all right. Let's see here. Again, so as I kind of mentioned at the beginning, the primary concern, or at least the more immediate concern, is dealing with the water quality. And you know, we're not ignoring the fact that overdraft could develop, or that that's a real concern. But again, it's about the timing of the issues. You know, I've heard Jeff say, you know, hey, the board meets 10 times a month, two hours.
10 times a month.
10 times a year. We'd be done.
I am very busy.
Yeah. We sort of have the same issue. We meet a couple of times a month.
You guys meet 10 times a month, but we don't meet 10 times a month.
We meet a couple of times a month. You guys meet 10 times a year. It's the same concept. There's a limited amount of time for folks who are volunteering their time to try and put this together. So there's got to be some prioritization of the issues and sequence and timing of decisions. It makes sense for how much time people can put into this. And that's really driven where we're at. Let's see. So the priority issues for L-PUG moving forward, I've got a few here. Obviously, it's going to be real important to how we allocate that shallow groundwater. That's sort of the key to the whole approach. And I think it's key to whether or not GMA and L-PUG can be successful in managing this basin over the long term. One concern that's out there is that the staff has made a statement that allocating that shallow water is a first-come, first-served proposition until such time that L-PUG proposes something different. That's one of the things we're working on. It's one of our goals for 2013, is to recommend a policy for how to manage that shallow water, because if we don't do that right, the whole basin, it won't work. There'll be conflict, and there'll be problems that perhaps can't get resolved by the GMA. So we want to emphasize, or I want to emphasize, that that shallow aquifer is not a new or separate disconnected body of water that's just there, ready to develop. It is connected to the rest of the basin, and it's important for pumpers in the rest of the basin. The deep aquifers have been relying on the pressure of the water up in that zone pushing down into the deep zone for four decades. They've been relying on it. So you can't just come along and take all that water out. You're going to impact the rest of the basin. So we need to be very careful about how we go about allocating any new pumping from the shallow aquifer. The concern is if a project came along on this first-come, first-served type situation, if that project's large enough to upset the basin balance, and if it were to not be offsetting other local water supplies in the basin, I think we end up in court. And that's not meant to be a threat. I think that's just the truth. There are attorneys looking at this for folks behind the scenes. They're not coming to the meetings. We're thankful for that. We'd like to keep them from the meetings. But we see the risk of that there, and it's a very real risk, and we'd like to keep this process moving forward. And one thing that's very clearly in the GMA's court is you are the arbiters of the allocation of the water. And so this very much needs to be a partnership on this particular issue.
From my perspective, to me, the most logical solution is for you folks in that area to come up with an agreed-upon protocol that works for your long-term strategic planning. And I think we voiced that opinion.
Right.
My fear is if you don't come up with that protocol in a timely fashion, we will get the question before us, and then we have to act on it. And at that point in time, I'm not sure everybody will like whatever decision we make.
Right.
So obviously, it is a high priority because it's for your benefit. You've created an entity that has the ability to deal with this issue. You've got to work through it and come up with an agreed-upon plan. Then we can run it through the public process and say, we can adopt the plan or not adopt the plan. And I'd rather do it that way than not have the issue dealt with, and then the question becomes before us, and then we've got to be the arbitrator, and we're just searching for an answer.
Sure.
So I absolutely agree with what you said. This is a priority, one of the priorities.
Yeah. It's a priority for L-PUG, and we'd like it also to be a priority for the GMA, and want to be working together. So this is a priority for L-PUG to work on in this calendar year.
Okay.
Other priority issues for L-PUG, I mentioned, we're assessing our infrastructure options. That's very high on the list. There's ongoing work. Cigus is paying for an engineering study to do that right now. Obviously, that can lead into developing more concrete project ideas. We need to start assessing in more detail the future fate of the inflows from Simi Valley. They have a recycle water master plan. They could take a fair chunk of the water out of the creek and out of availability for the basin. It's a real concern. And at some point down the road, there may be a deal that needs to be made with the city to secure some continued inflow. We don't know what that looks like, but we recognize that that's something we need to be looking at very carefully. We also need, as we start to work through the issues of managing the water quality, we need to transition to detailing more of the longer-term options that may be necessary to increase the basin yield. I think demand will catch up with us in due time. The question is, can we be ready with supply-side options to deal with that before the GMA has to take things into their own hands, if you will, on the demand side? I'm going to skip our next steps or just run through them real quick. These are the things we're working on, sort of in the sequence. We're working on an export policy, which is one of these key issues that staff and us identified as a key thing. We want to finish the basin specifically plan, at least from L-PUG's perspective, in second quarter of this year, and adopt it from L-PUG's perspective and provide it to you folks for your consideration. Maybe you'll adopt it, maybe you won't. We don't think that's really a critical issue at this point, the adoption, one way or the other. We've got a lot of work to keep working on, and a lot of things to keep working on anyways. The infrastructure study I mentioned, we'd like to start doing annual reports, and I think this is really important concept. It came up in the L-PUG meeting this morning with some of the discussion with Kathleen, is, you know, so how are we going to know what's going on in terms of what's happening in the basin and what you're doing? Well, these annual reports will be a very important communication tool within the group and also with GMA and other stakeholders. And that's a commitment we're making to do those. Skip this other stuff. I don't expect you to read the GAN chart. I just put it up there to show you that that's the level of detail that L-PUG is trying to lay out in terms of the things it's trying to do over the next few years. So this isn't just a bunch of words on a slide. We're actually thinking through how things need to happen and in what sequence, and how do we get there. I'd like to leave you with four, I think four, key policy issues that we think the GMA should be thinking about. We've already talked a lot about the prioritization and allocation of the shallow groundwater. I won't continue on that. Exports from the basin, this is something that we have a subcommittee currently working on to come up with a recommended policy for how do we deal with water moving out of the sub-basin, not out of the GMA, but out of the sub-basin, and what requirements are there for that. That's something that either through adoption of the plan or separately through some other process, resolution, what have you, we would like to bring to the GMA to put a backing on that policy, if it is something you're agreeable to. Kind of a similar issue, staff has brought up some questions about how do we edge-match with the other basins. And these are good issues, they're good things to be thinking about. They're not things that L-PUG was necessarily concerned with because, you know, we're looking at Los Postes Valley. But the one in particular that came up was there is some groundwater moving into the west Los Postes basin off of the Oxnard Plain. Obviously, there's seawater intrusion concerns on the plain, so there's a policy question in there. Does it make sense to have water moving into the west Los Postes from the Oxnard Plain when we have seawater intrusion? Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. You know, folks are paying United Pump fees in that area. Maybe they have a right to some of that water. There's a lot of issues in there, and I think that's something that the GMA could be thinking about. Obviously, if you're looking at basin-specific plans in other areas, there has to be some stitching along the edges to make things work, because, you know, it's not like there's a wall there and the groundwater doesn't move, you know, between the basins. And lastly, we think from our perspective that maybe GMA should be thinking about what its plans are if the Los Postes basin was to go into overdraft. And I think this is a key question, because it sort of gets at one of the core differences that I think I've seen between staff's comments and what I've heard at L-PUG. And in reviewing the comment letter and talking with staff, we've heard a lot about how they don't feel that the plan is complete because it does not have sort of these contingency plans that would deal with overdraft over the long haul. And we understand that, because from your perspective, that's the core issue for the agency. And certainly, there are multiple threats to that water balance. Demand could go up. We see crops changing. Simi could develop its recycle water supply, and we could see less inflow. There's lots of things that could happen. There's no arguing that there aren't risks. But the idea of how do you plan for that? How do you develop a contingency plan? Or do you need to? And I think maybe there's a simple answer for this, and maybe it's not that L-PUG needs to develop a contingency plan. The GMA has the authority to manage pumping in the basin. That's what you are all here for. You have clear and frankly, very powerful powers to address pumping. And so on the demand side of the equation, you have the authority to deal with demand if there's an overdraft situation. So I already think the contingency plan's already in place. You have the authority to manage pumping. You have a fee, or penalty, I guess is the right term, to charge for overpumping. So you have the ability to set a pumping level, the ability to charge a penalty, and that water, that can be used to bring water in through Cigus's system. So there's already a way to deal with the problem, and it's already in the rules that you already have written. The question is tweaking of those rules to make the mechanism work in a way that provides the right effect for the basin. So I think the challenge for L-PUG may not be so much to develop a contingency plan that says, we're going to do this, or that, or that. I think the challenge to L-PUG is to know that you have the authority to manage the demand side of the equation, and if they think that if there's going to be overdraft, and they want to address the issues from the supply side of the equation, they need to be ahead. They need to be working on those longer-term solutions to increase the yield of the basin, because frankly, those solutions are probably going to be cheaper than what... because frankly, those solutions are probably going to be cheaper than what the other solution that I described.
Let me, again...
That's...
Okay. I think the last thing you had said was you wanted some feedback from the board. So let me go across the floor. Dave? Mike?
No, I really don't have a comment right now.
You guys sit through all the meetings. Charlotte?
I think it's really, I think it's really, really hard to get an oral report and then to give feedback that's going to be taken as if we'd had time to think about it.
Okay.
So maybe it'd be a good idea to put it on another agenda at some point and let us comment after we've had some time to think other than just sitting here trying to digest everything that's been given to us.
Okay. Can we do that for an informational response to this item at next month's meeting? We'll do that. That'll be good. John?
I think Brian, it's an excellent report. I think it really brings a lot of issues to the forefront, you know. And one of the questions I had, because I don't know much about Simi Valley, that recycled water that goes into the basin. If they didn't go to the basin, where would that water go to?
That's really the only place it can go. It gets treated at their wastewater treatment plant. It has to be discharged.
And replenishes that one basin.
Well, they discharge it to the creek because they have nowhere else to put the water.
They didn't go into the basin and go to the ocean.
They go to the ocean.
Yeah. But because it percolates into the basin, that's why it doesn't go to the ocean.
Okay. And the other one was the storm water that goes over into the Camry area. What happens to that water?
A lot of that water ends up in the ocean.
In the ocean also. So we lose that water to the 4, 5 acre feet, whatever, 5,000 or 4,000 acre feet.
What happens is, once you get past the very northeastern part of the city where the river makes the big bend, the rest of the coastal plain has clay at shallow depth. So there's nowhere for the water to percolate.
And so we lose it.
Yeah.
But I think it's an excellent report, and I think, yes, we need some more time on this as opposed to being rushed, you know.
Sure.
And I just, my apologies because I have a really important meeting in Camry this afternoon, so otherwise. But it's an excellent report.
Just real quick, as you all know, I have been probably the most vocal about carrying staff's comments and my own comments to the process that you folks have been going through. Of all the reports that you have given us over the last two years, I found this to be very beneficial. And I think it's because we begin to simplify it into the key issues. And I think you're able to do that because you have put in the work over the last two years because you've in effect simplified it for yourself. And so you're now sharing that with us. I'm also very pleased and hopeful that although I think we all agree, we got a lot of pushback when the GMA staff made its report and we made our comments. And we've had a number of meetings on this issue, and I have voiced my opinion of where I think we ought to be and some of my concerns. And the feedback I've gotten from staff, from Kathleen and Jeff for the meetings they've attended, from this presentation, from comments that I've had from individuals, I am pleased that I believe you folks are listening to the wisdom that I have, in simple terms.
Yeah.
But more importantly... Sam's over there choking to death. Sorry, Sam.
Watch my mouth.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, just zip it.
Yeah. But the reason I want to say that is, is because the tone of what I hear from our staff, the tone I hear from you folks, is that we're back together, trying to solve this problem together. And I think that's probably been the biggest pitch I've made, that there is a role for the GMA, that somewhere along the line, somebody has got to be the referee of fairness across the board so that everybody is treated the same. And you guys have essentially agreed that there are some things that we at the GMA have to do, and I made comments to you, I've made it to the board, that you bring to us the issues that you want us to address. We've got to put the time and energy into addressing these underlying, I call them linchpins, but they're fundamental to any agreement that you made. And in some of those areas, export policy, for example, you're working on that. You're going to come up with a plan, and then you're going to bring it to the GMA. It's important that we don't drag it on forever, but we either lock into that plan or make adjustments, and we will do our job to give you the feedback and get this process done. I'm pleased with the last one because that has been one of our major concerns. And then you have heard me say, maybe we need to have Plan B, a backup plan. And essentially, what you're saying is, yeah, we may need a backup plan, but it's your responsibility, the GMA, because that's your authority to do. And it may be something we have to look at so that you're really tasking yourselves with three items in this list, but we have to deal with four items. My comment is, to all of you that go to these meetings, and we have two board members that attend those meetings, you're on the right track. I'm pleased with the direction you're going. I'm pleased that the GMA and L-PUG, I believe, are back trying to solve a common problem for the common good, and that's encouraging to me. And I will continue to push where I believe I need to push, and it's just the way it is. With that, I thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody in the audience have any quick comments before we go to the next item? Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item number four. It's basically this item, again, is there anything that... Oh, Kathleen. And I apologize, but I am going to have to really clamp you down on this one.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Mulhart and directors.
Thank you for a very nice report. We appreciate it.
I approve and file.
You want me to jump through to the...
Yeah. I'll give you just a couple of minutes, Kathleen, again.
She indicated seven minutes to me.
All right. How long's it going to take for item number five? Let me ask that one.
Item number five can take just a couple of minutes if you'd like. We were going to, Jeff asked me to demo one of the videos with Dr. Stiles, but if you want to skip that.
Let's put, if I may, let's hold that one off, and it may be if we can get all these items done and we still have time left, I may be able to do it without a full board. But I want to get to the items that I think need a full board. So Kathleen, I'll give you a few...
Let me run through real quick. You're familiar.
Oh, okay. A motion to receive and file, item three, a second. Any objection? All in favor? Aye. Pose during none. There we go. Thank you. Okay. Item four, very quick.
Okay. Item four, I went back real quick. There's a title. Going past background, we met with your board on October 24th. You told us to go to the executive committee. We went to the executive committee on November 12th, December 7th. They recommended that the current version not be adopted at this time. They directed staff to work with the La Spostas Users Group to determine three to five linchpin issues. There's a definition of a linchpin. A linchpin meeting was conducted on December 20th at the Kiagis Municipal Water District Office. The comment letter and the outcome of the linchpin meeting were discussed at the L-PUG meeting on January 9th. Four linchpin issues were determined at that December 20th meeting and presented at the L-PUG meeting, but the linchpins are water budget sustainability. That includes items touched on during that discussion included groundwater balance, inflow, outflow, change in storage, regulatory requirements and contingencies. Linchpin number two was funding, financial plan, expenditure plan. It was discussion included needs assessment, sources whether were the potential options and possibilities for funding, preferred options implementation. The third linchpin was timeline. That included, it touched on water budget funding possibilities, ordinance, policy adoption, legislative changes, contingency actions. And our fourth and final linchpin was legal and regulatory issues. That included the export policy, which L-PUG is currently working on. We talked about plume migration impacts to external basins, timeliness, and need for compliance monitoring. So based on comments and discussions at the L-PUG meeting on January 9th, we have the understanding that there is an agreement that simple reorganization of the existing document will address some of the GMA concerns. Additional previous L-PUG discussions and assumptions that they've had at their meetings, if they're incorporated into the document, that will address other concerns. And simple clarification will address the remaining concerns. Whoops. That was quick.
That doesn't say whoops. Where's the whoops?
That means it's time to take a breath.
That is the fastest breathless conversation you've ever had in the almost year you've been before us. That's amazing you can do that without breathing.
Okay. And as our finality, for the discussions this morning at the La Spostas Users Group meeting, they anticipate a revised draft being issued in March.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for your time.
You did good. It was fun too, wasn't it? Hey, anybody have any questions for Kathleen? If not, she has agreed to repeat exactly what she said out in the hallway, so verbatim.
Record it.
Yeah, very good. Any board members for Kathleen? No. Rick?
Just receive and file.
Yeah, let's receive and file. Hold yours so we can move on to the next one, and if we can, we'll deal with yours at the end, okay?
Second.
Motion, second. Any objection? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye? Aye. Okay. All right. Let's deal with item number...
Six.
Six.
No, six we proposed, and where's my next... Oh, item number seven. Okay?
Good afternoon, Chairman Mulhart, board members, members of the audience, Skarhart Hubner, Watershed Protection District. I'll be presenting this item, item number seven. This is a continuation of the item that was presented to you back in June of last year. I have a very short presentation, and I'll get right to it. As you know, the agency issued a letter back in June 13th, 2011. We have discussed previously with your board what happened in February 1995, as well as the March 25th, 1996 board meetings. There was four relevant questions posed to your board for consideration. At our June 27th, 2012 hearing on the matter, Ms. Ortega's attorney was given an opportunity to present. Your board did have some deliberation, and you had as a follow-up, you did request for the audio tape and transcript from the 1996 board meeting, that particular board meeting. Just to orientate yourself, there's the two wells in question, our agency's boundary. This map has been provided to you previously. So as follow-up to that meeting, we did provide you, as well as Ms. Ortega's attorney, the audio tape as well as the transcript. We have reviewed that. We believe it reaffirms the agency's previous position that the GMA board took no action at its June 1996 board meeting, nor did you grant authority or approval to the then-agency coordinator to exempt the Ortega property from agency's jurisdiction or regulation. Our conclusions remain the same. Ms. Ortega/operator has yet to register her wells, report the extraction, any extraction, pay any extraction fees for any extraction, or report the installation of a flow meter. Our recommendation today is as previously, is to deny the operator's request that the board direct the executive officer to rescind his June 13th, 2011 letter to Ms. Ortega and or have the agency staff cease efforts to regulate the wells located at the Ortega parcels. With that, I conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Board members have any questions? Al, do you have any comments? Okay. Sir?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Peter Goldenring, and I'm counsel for Lynda Ortega. I prepared in response to the staff report correspondence, and I spoke with Al, and he and I had hoped to get it to you before today. Al instructed I was to bring it to the meeting, so I have asked it to be passed out. Jessica's done that, is my understanding, and it's part of the record. It seems to me that the arc of this needs to be discussed for just a moment. The arc from our perspective has changed over time. The initial conversations that we had when this letter was first issued, because there was no conversation from staff to my client about the possibility of the issuance or the question until this letter was issued. But after it was issued, the position that staff took was that they thought that our client's two wells, which are on the very edge of the surface boundary of GMA, that those two wells, contrary to the geotechnical data that we believed existed and the expert reports that occurred back during that period of time, and contrary to Dr. Preston's determination, staff believed that they were perforated within the Foxer Grimes aquifers. And so we've traveled a fairly long road with staff trying to get our arms around that, including, as I indicated in the correspondence, most recently, essentially begging staff to sit down with our experts and go through that geotechnical data, because I'm no geologist. I couldn't tell you what those logs say or mean, to determine whether there was any disagreement around that sort of fundamental factual issue. And staff has declined that. And from a records perspective, from what's sitting in front of you, as we understand staff's report, they are not asserting that issue. They have not said in their staff report, and I didn't hear it today, that indication that they had given us some time ago, which means that from a geotechnical perspective and from a factual perspective, the two wells at issue are not perforated within the regulated aquifers. Now, we can have a legal conversation about do you regulate to the center of the earth, but in terms of the Foxer Grimes aquifers, there's no factual dispute. They've not presented any data to you in that regard. And we think that's important because that then, as I heard in the earlier conversations, certainly from the board today, brings us to the fundamental question, which is, at what point and under what circumstances is my client, or anybody in this audience, or any member of the public entitled to rely on a unambiguous determination letter from your agency director? Because that's what occurred. Dr. Preston issued by all accounts an unambiguous agency determination letter almost two decades ago to my client and her then-husband, that the wells were not within the jurisdiction of the GMA. And they have acted, my clients have acted consistent with that for nearly two decades. They've lived their life consistent with that for nearly two decades. And now my client, who is widowed, has attempted to sell her property consistent with that now nearly two decades later. And she can't because of the letter that was written that we're asking be rescinded. So it seems to me that that's where the rubber hits the road. That's the question. And that's why we have suggested that this is before the board, not in the context of a my client's not complying or in violation or refusing. But fundamentally, the question to this board is, when does a member of the public, in this case, my client or anyone else, have the right to rely on an unambiguous determination by the agency director? The position of staff is, we believe that the board didn't stamp it with approval. And therefore, that from a legal perspective, the board did not act. And therefore, the board is now, nearly two decades later, empowered and entitled to disavow what Dr. Preston did, who obviously and unfortunately can't be with us here today, to say to you, I wrote this letter, and this is why. He's gone, and that would be important for everyone in this room to know. But because the agency chose not to do anything during his tenure, in terms of being around to be able to answer questions or provide input or backup data, we're left without that information. So from our point of view, that's the issue, and I don't think staff disagrees, given how it's now been presented. And in that context, it's important to keep in mind several things. The Dr. Preston letter never was lost. It wasn't misplaced. It wasn't anything that the staff says they were unaware of or didn't know about, or wasn't in the right file, or was confused. It's always been sitting in the agency files. All of the expert reports, the analysis, the underlying geotechnical data, all of that data from that time period back in 1994, '05, and '06, that went to the Technical Advisory Committee, that reported back to this board, all of that data has been in the agency files for these near past two decades. And nobody disagrees that it's been available to staff. So there's been nothing hidden or untoward by my client... So there's been nothing hidden or untoward by my client, and there's no ambiguity about what lawyers refer to as the documents or the records in terms of what's been sitting with the agency. So focusing on that, it seems to me that the first question, from just a public policy perspective, is, I don't believe that staff would assert that my client's done anything wrong. The wells are registered, they always were registered, the well permits were taken when the wells were originally drilled, there's never been any secret about it when the problem arose, there was immediate interfacing with staff, all of the information came on the record. So my clients acted in complete good faith around this issue. If we accept the proposition that the agency is of equal good faith, for a moment, then from a public policy point of view, you have two good faith people here, and who suffers the consequence in that context when the letter came from the agency director that my client relied on? And I would respectfully suggest, not just from a public policy point of view, but from a fairness point of view, and also from a legal perspective, my client does not suffer the consequence of that equal responsibility. But I would suggest that it's not equal, because my client did everything originally, was provided the letter, staff always had the letter, always had the information, and if there was what is now asserted, is some failure by the agency director to come to you and say, here's the letter, say okay, and we have to believe that you would have said yes, if that would have happened at that time, because the transcripts clearly indicate a tasking of your director to go do this, and craft it as fair after he completes the analysis in context of consultation with then-agency counsel. So he did what he was tasked to do, then under that circumstance, it's not even, and my client should not bear the consequence of what transpired. And in the correspondence, and since this is a legal issue, we have to talk about what the legal authority of Dr. Preston was. If we look at the transcript, the argument that staff makes to you is, there isn't a motion, and a second, and a vote to approving the letter that Dr. Preston issued. But the transcript is quite clear that the instruction from the chair, without objection to everyone, from anyone on the board, is, go do it! The board says, go do it!
Mr. Goldenring?
Yes, sir.
Let me stop for a second. Let me ask staff a few questions, okay? Do we have wells within our boundary that are not perforated in the Fox Canyon Aquifer?
Yes.
Okay. Are those wells subject to GMA restrictions?
Yes.
Why?
We don't, they could be screened into multiple zones, they may be screened into one zone, they may be screened into the upper aquifer, that's not titled Fox Canyon.
Does the ordinance say that the GMA will regulate all wells overlying the boundary of the Fox Canyon Aquifer?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
Is that what it says, Al?
That is how the agency boundary is.
So the agency ordinance does not say that our authority comes from the fact that it's actually drawing water from the Fox Canyon Aquifer, but that the well overlies the boundary of the Fox Canyon Aquifer? Is that what it says? And in fact, we have literally hundreds, if not, well, I wouldn't say thousands, because we have a total of thousands, but we literally have hundreds of wells that overlie the boundary of the Fox Canyon Aquifer, that are not perforated or draw water in the Fox Canyon Aquifer. Is that a true statement from a technical standpoint?
Correct.
Okay. So first of all, the issue that, because you've made a big case of the geotechnical, the geotechnical is irrelevant to the authority of the GMA.
May I ask a question?
No, let me finish. All right, so that's item number one. If the boundary is the controlling criteria, any well that overlies the boundary is subject to the restrictions of the GMA. And for those of you that sat through, well, 27 years of meetings that we've had here, have I, over the years, said a lot of things, because I have a tendency to think out loud? Let me ask board members that have had the pleasure of sitting through...
Oh, you've said a lot of things!
Yeah, have sat through a lot of meetings where we, as a board, think and say a lot of things. We have folks in the audience. And I think what you'll find is, is if you go through the record, every single tape that we've done over the last umpteen years, we talk about a lot of things. Because that, I think, is part of our responsibility, is to think out loud. And we do think out loud. And not everything we think out loud comes to fruition, but it generates maybe some action, maybe not some action. What is the only way that we have, over the years, effectively made sure that all the thinking that we've done has ultimately come to some final decision? We make a motion, we take a second, we take a vote, and that's the operating authority that the agency coordinator and this agency operates under. We've been doing that for a long time. I would submit to you, as mayor of the city of Camarillo, as on-the-board supervisor, as the chairman of the board of supervisor, if everything we talked about allowed staff to imply whatever they wanted to do, and make whatever rules they wanted to make, without the board supervisor taking a vote and taking in action, or the city of Camarillo taking a vote and taking in action, or my agency, United Water Conservation District, we'd have no discussion. So, I'm not sure that just because we talked about something in this item, and I don't agree with your assertion that we made it absolutely clear, in fact, as I read through the transcript, and I did read the transcript, because frankly, I was there, and I say a lot of things, nowhere in the transcript did we give or imply to Lowell or to anybody the authority to unilaterally act without the common sense of coming back to the board and bring it to the board for us to sign off on. That was not done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to chime into that just a little bit, because you got me to thinking about something. One of the great frustrations I had in my first term on this board, and then when I came back to the board, when Mr. Preston was still here, was that there was a lot of thinking, and he took that as direction, and he would bring it back to us, not at the next meeting, but maybe six months later. And then the conversation would have changed, and we'd give him different direction, and he'd come back, and four or five months later, it would be on the agenda again, and we'd play around with these things. And that was the way things happened. But ultimately, the board would make a decision, and it would have a vote and a second, and a vote would be counted and reported. In this instance, nobody ever found where it came back. And so it was the practice of the board, I believe, to talk and maybe give him some kind of direction, but not as a final direction, but as to bring it back all in, wrapped up with a bow on it, so they could vote on it. But perhaps they wouldn't do that, perhaps they'd talk about it and give more direction, another completely direction. Okay, I got that one out of my system.
May I briefly respond to the choir?
Let me, I'm trying to deal with, so you've tried to frame the fundamental question. I don't agree with the fundamental question, I don't agree with your framing, but the question is, does this agency, by legislative authority, have the controlling authority over those lands that overlie the Fox Canyon, the Fox Canyon groundwater aquifer? They do. Second of all, does the agency coordinator have the authority on his own to make a binding determination without the approval of the board? The answer is no. Now, your next assertion is, is that it would damage your client. I'm not sure I agree with that assertion. Your client would be no better or no worse than anybody else that's situated in the lands overlying the Fox Canyon groundwater aquifer. And in fact, we have hundreds of people that don't perforate the Fox Canyon, that abide by the GMA rules, are registered under the GMA ordinance, are in compliance with the GMA ordinance, and that's all that has to be done. So the question that's before us is not whether public, and all the grandiosity that you've added to this issue, the question that's before us, this board today, as I see it from staff, and as I read there on the agenda, is pretty straightforward. Does the board, it's three relevant questions. Did the board grant authority to the agency coordinator in 1996 to whether or not the operator's well is subject to the agency regulation? The answer is no, we did not. There is no factual data that says we did. It says we talked about a lot of issues, we turned it back to staff to give us some direction, but they never came back to staff, and we went on to something else, like we do on a lot of issues, but it never came back, and it was never given the authority to do that. Did the executive officer have the authority to send the letter of June 13th, 2011? The answer is yes. The executive order does have the responsibility to administer the agency's ordinance code, which includes notifying operators. Have we, over the last 25 years plus that I've been here, have we discovered at certain times, certain operators who were in the boundary of the GMA, of the Fox Canyon, not perforated in the Fox Canyon, and we went and said, you've got to register their well? Yes. Have we brought them into the fold? The answer is yes. Are they subject to GMA regulations, whatever they are at the time? The answer is yes. So if you go through the history, the 27 years that I've been here, and some 30 years the agency's been operated, did everybody on day one come right back into the family and said, I'm here, count me in? No. Did we have to do cleanup actions over the last 27 years, 28 years? The answer is yes. In every one of those cases, what was the criteria? Not where they took their water, but where they lie relative to the boundaries of the GMA. Are they under our jurisdiction? The answer is yes. Did the agency coordinator at that time have the authority to bring them into the fold? The answer is yes. Did the agency coordinator in 1996, and I probably know Lowell Preston as well as anybody, because I worked with him for umpteen years, on all kinds of issues, and his normal course of action, as Charlotte outlined, was to ask questions, to bring it to the board, and most board meetings, he sat there very quietly and let us deliberate, and then when we gave him direction, either do something with it, he'd bring it back to us. Why he did not do it in this case, I don't know. But it did not, as you assert, imply to him authority that he does not have. And finally, should the board direct the executive officer to retract his June 13th, 2011 letter? The answer is no. Why? Because it's within his authority to do that, to send a notice to an operator. Your position is, your operator is not responsible to the GMA, not under the authority of the GMA. Why? Because your operator, your client, doesn't take water from the Fox Canyon. I've just explained to you that the ordinance doesn't require that you take it from, you have to overlie, and it's clear that at least some of the wells overlie. So I'm, I mean, we can go and do the dance, and we can go through all of your letter here, where you make statements, and I will tell you, you have, I mean, you go through a whole bunch of stuff, trying to quote the tapes, and I'm telling you, from a historical perspective, and you've got folks that have sat through these meetings for a long time, we talk about a lot of things here, but until it's voted on by the board, and it does not have authority for the executive officer to take action. And then finally, you have a statement, a whole section that says undisputed facts. I did not have a chance, in all honesty, to read it in detail, but I did skim through it, and I went through it, as you know, I was here before the meeting started. And I think that your assertion that these undisputed facts are not true. There are some disputed facts, and namely, the biggest one that I believe this board has responsibility for is, is that the wells that overlie the boundary of the Fox Canyon are within the jurisdiction of the Fox Canyon, and all we're doing is registering those wells. As I recall, the letter that was sent to you talks about not going retroactive in time, trying to go back 20 years and pick up a whole bunch of surcharges and a whole bunch of other things. We're starting anew, going forward. I think that's consistent with what we did for a lot of other people that we brought into the fold. Today, you've heard in your area, a group of people that have been meeting continuously for almost two and a half years, to come to grips with a real problem in that area. It's going to be expensive. It's going to be painful for a lot of people to keep their way of life going. To them, a lot would say, your client has an advantage that they don't have. All the GMA is saying is, we're going to put everybody on an equal playing field, everybody needs to be registered. Are there some people in your area that are currently unregistered that we don't know about, for whatever reason? Probably yes. Who are they? I don't know. By definition, if I knew, I'd know. When we find them, are we going to bring them into the fold? Yes, we are. That would be the mission of the GMA. That's what fairness would be. So I don't agree with your assertion that we would do harm to your client, I don't believe that. If anything, we've made your client equal to everybody else similarly situated. We haven't put an undue burden on your client, we haven't taken away an undue burden, we've made them equal. And in the record, as I read it, as I read through the tapes, as I read through staff, as I've read through the minutes of those meetings that I wasn't at, that you've made your presentation, nothing that I find changes. What I view are the controlling facts. Your client overlies the Fox Canyon groundwater aquifer, that belongs in the GMA. This board never acted and passed a resolution that affirms that we identify your wells as outside the boundaries of the GMA. Never happened. And we never gave authority to the agency coordinator to assert such a position. Under your criteria, that means that if we talk about a whole bunch of things, and staff's, I don't care if it's the city, the county, the state, or the federal government asserts a whole bunch of things, staff are kind of left off alone to kind of interpret it the way they want, and decide, well, I think this is what they said, and we'll make it the rule of the land. That, to me, would be a total disaster, and that's essentially what you're trying to tell us, that because we talked about it, and we're a fair guy, and you're a fair guy, and fair as fa... Sir, let's go back to the issue. You do not overlie the Fox Canyon groundwater area, therefore, you overlie the Fox Canyon groundwater aquifer, therefore, you should be in the agency.
So, Mr. Chair, the request is, that we rescind the letter?
If you want to make that as a motion, you can. I promised Mr. Goldenring, I'd give him a chance to say some other things, because he's been chomping at the bit to say some things, so I will give you a chance to respond to the thing.
And I, it seems to me, at the very least, Chairman Mulholland, for the record, I want to say a couple of things to you relative to what you just said. I said to staff directly, is all that you want, let me back up, in the context of what we believe to be the geotechnical data, that the regulated aquifers, if I can use that for a moment, the impacted aquifers, are not perforated relative to my client's wells. I said to agency staff, is the issue that you just want the wells registered, or are you going to take the position that there's a limitation on the amount of water that can come out because of this question, this geotechnical question around where the perforations are? I posed that question to staff.
Okay, all right, I understand the question. I understand the question.
I couldn't get an answer.
All right, my answer to you is, my answer to you is, the first step in this process is, whether you have an answer to the second phase of your question is irrelevant. You must be registered into the agency.
I understand.
Second of all, second of all, sir...
May I please respond?
No, sir. Second of all, okay?
Yes.
It is not the responsibility of this agency to prove or disprove your well logs. It's your responsibility, and staff has told you that, Al Fox has told you that, Al has told you that, because that's one of our previous directors, keep going.
Al Fox from Fox Canyon.
Yeah, geez, you know, anyway, that's part of my pea brain. The first question is, are you under the jurisdiction of the GMA? The answer is yes. If, in fact, there is a second and third question down the road, then that question will have to be answered as a separate question. But to try to... But to try to tie this in one thing, "Well, we're going to fight the issue that we're in the GMA, if you're going to charge us for this," we don't. The question before us simply now is, and the question that you raised way back when is, that brought to this board, does the agency coordinator have the authority to send you a letter? And the answer is now before the board. That's the question before us right now.
There's no question about that that's the technical question before you, but I wanted to answer your question and the implication of what you said to me, Chairman, about the conversations between our side and staff in terms of trying to solve this matter before it came here, because we've been trying to hammer out that geotechnical question, because if it's solved, then the global problem is solved. But since we cannot obtain that clarity from staff, we're forced to this issue, which is fine, here we are, and we'll have our record, and it'll unfold the way it'll unfold. But I want to be clear with you, that especially given the tone of your comments to me, that there's been a considerable effort by my client to bring a piece to this over the last year, including, as you described it, bringing those issues together, so my client understands what it means. Now, I get the dispute issue, I get where the legal lines are drawn, but there has been a very considerable effort to bring a piece to the issue, but the position of staff is exactly as you say. We will not solve the second question unless you say uncle to the first, and that creates this battle as opposed to a solution to it.
Okay.
The second issue, please, I listen to you, please allow me to make the record. The second issue, Chairman, is if we accept your proposition, and this isn't anything I think I'm going to be able to convince you on, this becomes an issue for the court, where your agency director misacts, if we accept your proposition, that Dr. Preston took the comments and ran with them in a manner that, as you look at it now, you think he was not authorized to do, under a number of legal doctrines, including ostensible authority, and I've given you the citations here, and I'm not asking you to make those legal calls, and I understand that this isn't necessarily the place. We believe quite strongly that the legal answer is, the consequence of the agency director doing that is that the agency is bound. Now, I will say to you the same thing I said a moment ago. My client has no interest in war, none. And that's why I said to staff, "Let's tie the issues together, so she knows what the world looks like," as opposed to, "Now, we're in a battle of where the wells are perforated. Can't we bring the issues together?" And I begged staff to sit down with whoever in staff's land was thinking about this with our side, and at least come to that understanding of where the perforations were. Because if the perforations are not in the regulated aquifers, then the consequence to the resolution becomes a much easier solution on our side. But as you've articulated, they're pulled apart. I don't understand why the pull apart, because it seems to me, from a resolution point of view, short of warfare, that's the practical way, Chairman, but I can't make people do that.
Okay, I've heard your case.
Mr. Chairman, the item, the second item is not on today's agenda. The item on today's agenda is the item that Mr. Goldenring asked us to discuss back in June. It was put off, and it was put off at his request, and here we are today, and I would like to act on that one, since it's on the agenda. The only thing on the agenda is whether or not this board should direct our executive officer to rescind his letter of last June 13. And so, I'm going to make a motion in response to that, and I move to deny Mrs. Ortega's request to direct the executive director to rescind his June 13, 2011 letter to her.
Okay.
No second there.
A motion, a second. Any other discussion? Al, any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Chairman Mulholland?
No. Oh, wait, yes, the way she phrased it, the answer is yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Saragosa?
Yes.
Director Kelly?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to... Okay, let's go back real quick to item five.
Good afternoon, Chairman Mulholland and directors. For the record, my name is Rick Vergeuts, I'll be presenting item number five today, the Irrigation Allowance Index Update, and I'm just waiting for that presentation to come up. Jessica, are they pulling up item five? We want to show the PowerPoint first. There we go, okay. Thank you. Okay, here we go. So, 2013 is the first year for the Irrigation Allowance Index. So, what does this mean? Today growers can determine the 2013 allocation range for the year. They can do that now, which is helpful, because it offers some predictability. The FCGMA cannot set the actual allocation till year end, and when we do that, it'll be based on the precipitation for the year. And finally, the first filing under the Irrigation Allowance Index will be in January through March 2014. And briefly, you've seen this map before. This is the map that the growers will use moving forward now. And one thing that they can do at this stage is determine what zone they're in. So, for instance, if we're over here in Oxnard, they'd be in zone one. And they can use this irrigation allowance table to determine what the water allowances would be. And I'm having trouble reading it from here, but if I go down to, here's sod, for example. In a wet year, the allowance would allow, I think that's 3.9 acre-feet per acre, and in a dry year, it would allow, I believe that's 4.2 acre-feet per acre. So, that'll be the range for sod for full year in Oxnard. At the end of the year, when the agency has the precipitation data, it'll make the pick on whether or not it was a wet year, a dry year, or a typical year, and then that will lock in the actual allocation for that year. But for now, the growers can see what the high side and low side of the allocation would be. Okay. So, we've done a lot of outreach. The last big outreach effort we had was in September, when Dr. Stiles was here, and we had another workshop, how can growers learn more? We know outreach is important. The FCGMA website has other resources, downloads of the new paperwork and presentations, and the training videos are now completed. I don't know if your board had a chance to look at any of those, but Jeff had asked me to demo one of those today. The nice thing about the videos is they do a good job laying out the basic terms and some specific examples for actual crops, sod, strawberry, and how to fill out the forms for the year. So, it's a tool that we haven't had in the past. The video topics that are up on the GMA website are numerous, there are actually 10. And they go into the existing program, which by this stage is somewhat dated, but it's good to provide growers the context, so they can compare the former program to the new program. And so, we've got the evaluation, the recommendations that Dr. Stiles conducted for the agency. He has a presentation on irrigation performance terms, which I think is helpful, talks about distribution uniformity and other key terms. We have a program overview, we have a short video about the weather stations, and comparisons of the new versus the old program, and then it gets into actually how to file avocados, celery, sod, strawberries. And Kathleen, if you could pull up the GMA website, I'd like to show one of those videos. Why don't we show the sod video? So, Jeff had asked me to demonstrate to your board how to go to the website, and I know you know how to do this, but where to find the videos. So, on the left-hand column, there's a link now, and it goes to videos. And these are where the videos are. And before you start that, Kathleen, I just want to say, we're in the process of transitioning the website to a different system, and so, we've got the videos up there, but this is not, this is useful, but not real fancy. So, now, before Kathleen starts this, how much do you want to see? This is almost a 10-minute video. Let's go in, first of all, John's going to leave now. Okay, that's fine. Let's start the video, and maybe we get to five or six minutes, and then we make it all the way through, John. And I don't have anything else other than... I think that's it for today. I'll just look for your feedback then on when to cut it off. Here's what I, what I, start the video, and let's do it for a few minutes, and then I'd like to stop and have some discussion with some of the growers that are here, because as Kathleen...
She's up in the booth.
Kathleen, as Kathleen knows, I gave staff some feedback yesterday, I want to talk about some of the changes that people may want to have to our webpage, even as you just showed it, I came up with somebody here. Because the videos are no good, and the rest of people actually go to it and can find it, and that's the frustration I have about webpage management. So, let's see the video, and then I want to ask some questions to the audience, and see if we give you guys some feedback on things you might be able to do as you redesign this webpage, or should we design, recreate it, okay? Okay, thank you. Kathleen, let's go ahead and start. So, this is going to be for sod, and this, I chose this one just because it shows how to do the forms. Your board is familiar with some of the background of the program.
This series of training videos is brought to you by the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency and the Irrigation Training and Research Center of Cal Poly State University San Luis Obispo, in order to assist growers with a new Irrigation Allocation Index program. This video will provide an overview of the differences between the appearance of the old application and the new application. We will cover the details on how to answer the questions on the new application. And finally, we will go through a detailed set of answers specific to sod. Let's begin. Here you can see the first part of the form on the old application. Most of you have seen this form and are used to the format for the data to be entered. The calculation for the old program was based on irrigation efficiency. Now, compare this to the new application. If you notice, it looks a lot like the old one. It was designed so that the procedures for growers to fill out the new applications would change as little as possible. The primary difference is the calculation that is done for the last step. Rather than calculating the irrigation efficiency, the new form calculates the Irrigation Allowance Index. On the new application, the first step is to select your ETO zone. If you are not sure which zone your operation is in, check this map with the three different zones, which you can find on page four of the application. Growers should be able to find their farms in relation to key landmarks such as the Camarillo Airport and Somis. The second step is to identify the year type for precipitation. The year type will have been selected by the FCGMA at the end of the calendar year, based on the precipitation data that was collected by the three Simmons stations within the GMA boundaries. It may be that different zones might be experiencing different year types. For example, zone one might be a dry year, zone two might be a typical year, and zone three might be a dry year. It will depend on the data collected for each zone. When growers are asked to fill out their forms each December, the GMA will have already published the year type. The data entry format for the ETO zone and the precipitation year type looks like this. You will be asked for your ETO zone and your year type. The fourth step is to have each grower provide their applied water data from wells and other water sources. The applied water table on the new form is exactly the same as the form for the old program. The grower then uses this table, provided on page three of the application, to look up their zone and year type and match it with their crop type to find their allowance value. The first step for a sod grower would be to look up the single-season value for sod. In this example, that value would be 4.2 acre-feet per acre, assuming zone one and a dry year. The next step would be to include other crops that are farmed on that specific field. It is common for sod fields to be double-cropped with a different crop. In this example, the second crop is off-season strawberries, or strawberries dash summer. The value for that crop is 1.9 acre-feet per acre. The tricky part of this calculation is that the sod value is for the whole calendar year, so if the crop is only grown for half of the year, then the sod value of 4.2 acre-feet per acre must be produced by 50%. So, the total water allocation would be 4.2 acre-feet per acre times .5 plus 1.9 acre-feet per acre, which equals 4.1 acre-feet per acre. The next step is to fill in the table with the information that was just collected, crop category, number of APN, or Assessor Parcel Number, acres, and irrigation allowance per acre from the new IAI program chart. Multiply the number of acres by the allowance value to determine the total irrigation allowance. One thing that is not on the chart is an exemption for crops that are not grown year-round. For example, sod is only out in the field for about half a year. For cases such as this, the grower will need to multiply the value by the fraction of the total year that the crop is grown. For example, for a sod crop that is grown for six months, or half a year, the grower would take his or her annual allowance and multiply it by .5. There are several crops like this that will have to be handled on a case-by-case basis. The last step on the form is to calculate the Irrigation Allowance Index by dividing the water applied by the total irrigation allowance. Ideally, this value is less than 1.0. If the value is greater than 1.0, the grower has exceeded the allocation. Let's go through an example using sod. The key to a crop of sod is to make sure to figure out the timing of the sod crop. If the crop is year-round, then there is no adjustment. If the field is double-cropped, the sod value needs to be reduced by 50%. For this first example, let's look at an example sod grower using actual data from a grower in 2009. Using the old form, this grower calculated their irrigation efficiency. As you can see, the result of the evaluation showed an irrigation efficiency value of The old program stated that as long as the grower had a value of greater than 80% for their irrigation efficiency, then the grower was within the water allocation requirements.
Kathleen, can we stop the video?
However, this value is artificially high, since it is impossible to have an irrigation efficiency greater than 100%.
Okay, Kathleen, the reason I stopped, I've seen people pay out the door, and I wanted to have a quick discussion. Let me just start off on this board. From my perspective, this video, training module, is equal to the quality that I see and have seen over the years at United Airlines. It's as professional, as you can see in the industry. It's easy to follow. It's logical, it has nice little elements to it. You can stop and start, you can go and follow along, and your application is a workable video that I think accomplishes what we envisioned when we said we ought to have an online training tool. So, from my perspective, the way it's done, the voiceover, the graphics, the way it moves your eyes around with different highlights and everything, as I said, is as professional as everything, anything I've seen at United Airlines. So, my compliment to staff.
I'm sorry, and my compliment to staff, and my compliment to Dr. Stiles. Now, the next question. These are now available, and I just got... These are now available, and I just got the renewal form. It's sitting on my desk to sign and do all that kind of stuff. I don't recall in that newsletter that we got from the GMA where it said the videos were available, and if it did, it's so buried in there that it didn't jump out at me. And I think if the rest of the videos are in the same format with the same kind of quality, I think we've accomplished what we wanted to. I had trouble, when I went to our webpage, as I told Kathleen, just finding information, because we have these nice nifty little blocks, and it just... Okay, which block to go to? And so my question to you guys and to those in the audience, Robert, you used it, Dave, I don't know if you've used it, I don't know what we've done at United when we deal with our wells at United. I'd like some discussion between, among, rather, all of us. Is there anybody else that's tried to use it or has some frustrations with the GMA home webpage in terms of its usability? Now's the time to speak so we can give staff some ideas. As an example, I was thinking that if this is new, one of the things we do at United when we have something new like that on a standard webpage, they superimpose a big finger going, "New, new, look, look, new, new," and otherwise guys will look at it like we all do and go, "Nothing new." Oops, there's something new. Do we need to do that? Do we need to change the blocks so they're easier to put your little icon in? That's the one that frustrates me. They make the blocks so small that if you touch it and slide out of it, it disappears and you start all over again. There's got to be a way to make the webpage, in my opinion, more usable. What do you guys think? That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about.
Chair Mulholland, on the first issue with the videos, they weren't available by the time we did them. They've only recently become available in terms of acceptability, and so you're really getting the first shot at that.
All right, so let me ask, all right, very good. Let me ask the board, do you think we should spend the money to do a specific newsletter to each of the growers? The reporting period is due by February 15th. There is some time. I'm not sure you can get a newsletter out in that timeframe, but if you can't, that's okay. But well before the next filing date, we do a newsletter out to allow people to go start to these training modules, because there's stuff in here that is valuable even before the filling out of data, how the system works, what's the intent. Should we do that? I see Dave nodding his head, yes, and he's the only other alternate that's left here. Robert, do you think we should spend the money to do that? Anybody else out there?
Instead of a newsletter, how about just a letter?
Or a letter or something. I'd like, I was thinking a color letter with some graphics and something to catch your eye saying, "Hey, we finally did something."
Yay!
It would seem to me we'd need some screenshots, so as they migrate through it, there's some screenshots showing them, you know, this is what the screen will look at, and then your little printed arrow, you know, click here, or something like that. Because otherwise, I'm sure in the farm community, as in every other community, we've got people who don't even own a computer, and we've got other people who have a secretary at a farm, so you know, you've got to reach out to all those people.
Would it be appropriate to direct staff to spend dollars to do a mailing and a big announcement and spend a few more bucks than normal, not just a black-and-white letter, but to put a letter and then have a two-sided color thing that shows where to find it and whatnot?
I think Rick should be available 24/7 for the next two weeks to take all those calls.
And if Kathleen can go through her presentation in seven minutes, you could whip this thing out in three. I know you can do it. All right.
We can do it.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Charlotte, as direction to staff?
Yeah, I guess so. I'm just sitting here wondering. It's not on the agenda, and this is an information...
Can we do that, Al? Can we direct staff?
Maybe they can do it on their own.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Not specific direction.
Let's be careful. Should we direct staff, can I direct staff to produce a mailing? What can I, what can I do?
You can ask staff to come back with a report as to what they've done to advise the operators.
Okay. I direct staff to come back to us at the next board meeting with a detailed report of what you've done to get the word out that this is the new, latest, and greatest. We've got some videos out there. Carol, what do you think?
One of the problems is...
You've got to come up. We love your voice. You've got to get on tape. I only allow Dave and Robert to nod their heads, and then I record head nodding.
Carol's shown zone water. You know, one of the issues is, and I'm really guilty of this too, we only look at this a couple times a year, and when it's time to go file again, you pull the old file and you find, "Oh, gosh, what's my password? How do I get in? Now where was that again?" I get lost, and then I have to make a phone call in to say, "Okay, I'm lost again."
This is exactly the conversation I just had.
And so I'm lost again, and I made a call in, and I caught Jeff yesterday. So it, I'm guilty of that. I don't, you know, I don't take enough notes to know one year to the next, and that's probably going to be the issue. So maybe just, maybe just some instructions on, you know, here's your, you know, put your password here. Well, maybe just something where it's just a permanent thing in the file. Here's your sign-on and your password, and here's how you get on. Because, and then maybe that'll save one phone call.
Yeah, we got to simplify the process.
But that's kind of where I am again. I'm, you know, got a lot of filling out to do, and I can't remember where I left off.
Yeah, okay. Frankly, that is exactly the conversation I had with Kathleen last week on that very issue.
The thing, when, on the new ag commissioner's form from the state of California, it repopulates the screen when you come back on, and I don't know if that's a capability of the system because we're just starting the system.
Yes, it is. The problem is you can't find the screen to get on to begin with. That's the problem.
But like your acreage and those previous crops and stuff, if they were already populated, then you could correct it if the things changed. But that's a nice thing on Ready-Pacala, it's a form that he has annually, it's, are your crops the same as previously? Yes or no? For those with permanent crops, it really simplifies the thing. And the same thing with the ag commissioner's form is if you have permanent crops, there's almost, you know, five minutes' worth of work from portal to portal, so your form could get a lot easier for us, especially for those people with permanent crops, if it repopulates.
Anybody else have any suggestions to staff on their webpage? All right, I don't see any nods. So the direction to staff is come back next month with a full report on how we're going to get the word out and the like, okay?
Will do.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Okay, let's go to the...
I have just a couple more slides.
Okay.
I'll be quick. So the weather station at the Moore Park Country Club, it's going well. We should have it in by March. And the new module that the agency will use next year, not this year, but next year for the Irrigation Allowance Index, because it's not due to be filed this January through March, it's due to be filed next January through March. That's up and running. Why do we care? Well, because it's done in a way that we're able to retain the old webpages in case we have additional retroactive filing, and it'll allow for additional testing, and it may create an opportunity this year for web-based operator training, actually keying in the data into the computer. The videos that I showed you from Dr. Stiles are training videos that he developed. We may be able to use FCGMA online to create a site where operators can actually key in the data and have the system report the results just as test data.
Okay.
So that's it.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. And again, my compliments to the graphics folks and Dr. Stiles. Please tell him that, based on the one I saw, can we receive? Yes, ma'am.
Dale Zarauski, Farm Bureau. My question is, there were some allocation numbers that exceeded the GMA. I know in, like, the upper Los Postes, basically, it came out as five and over that. And I know what I heard from Stuart is he's looking for some real data to kind of tweak the model there, and I was just wondering what the status was on that, because some of the allowances were greater than the GMA.
Okay. You realize, by the way, Dale, that that is two times, and Rob Saperstein has not been up here at all, okay?
In months.
In months, but you've been up here twice. But Rob is hiding in the corner. He can hide, but we see you.
Well, I...
I'm actually sitting in his chair.
Yes.
I can, I can tell you, we haven't heard from Dr. Stiles on that particular issue for a long time, but he did say quite a while ago that, you know, these numbers, some of them do look kind of high, and they may need to be revisited, but we haven't heard from him recently about it.
Okay, very good. All right, we have a bunch, oh, I need a motion to receive.
Move to receiving file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have an administrative reports, motion?
Move to receiving file.
Executive officers reports, yeah. A motion and a...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, to February 27th. We're adjourned. Anybody have anything? It's too late. Goodbye.
Not even 3:30? Wow, I'm impressed.
It happens when you throw certain things off the agenda. Jessica, I'm going to give you all these. There's some stuff in there that is confidential that Al gave us. Be sure it gets back to Al so we don't keep it.